Six o'clock, Curtis, are we ready? And it looks like we are. We got the high sign there. So with that, we'll call a meeting to order, and we will accept additions, deletions, corrections to the agenda. Anything from anyone? The only thing I would like to add, we'll do a quick moment for former mayor and former commissioner Matt Lyman after the pledge. So with that, we'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
Move to approve.
Support.
That's the word. I'll probably be back from vacation in just a minute.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried. Role has been taken?
Yes, thank you.
Role has been taken. Good. Please rise and join us for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical and with the written and just the ground.
Okay, thank you. And as I mentioned before, I'd like to take just a moment now, if we could, and have a moment of silence out of respect and admiration for the number of years that Mel dedicated to this city. So would you permission, please have a moment of silence? All right, thank you. Appreciate that. Certainly our condolences to the Lyman family and their loss at Mel's. Tough ones.
Great guy.
Yeah, he is a great man. Next, we'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of September 12, 2023.
Move to approve.
Support.
Have a motion support. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, please say no. The motion is carried. Moving down to hearings, we are to consider a resolution to set a public hearing for Tuesday, October 4, 2023, at 6:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as the agenda allows, to consider a final special assessment district rule, number one, for 2021, of 2021, for the construction of sanitary sewer leads on the Francisco Avenue project. Your pleasure. Move to adopt.
Support.
And motion support. Are there anything we want to discuss, Tom?
This will be the last piece we need to close out this project on Francisco. So yeah, this is the cost share for the sewer leads from Armine to the home. So we share that with the folks when we do these projects 50/50. So we don't have to dig in the street later once we put the pavement back down.
Okay. Any last questions? All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? The motion is carried. Moving down to resolutions. We're to consider a resolution approving traffic control order number 160 to place no parking signs on the south side of Iowa Street from Falkirk Road to Charles Avenue. Your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Support.
Motion support.
Didn't we do this last meeting?
This is the section that didn't get rebuilt to move the no parking on the side that doesn't have fire hydrants.
Fire hydrants.
So we have a straight fire lane from Charles to Wright Avenue, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. Just make it all consistent so make it easier for enforcing and for just people.
To remember. It's easier if we don't park on the side of the fire hydrant.
Yep, exactly.
Okay, anybody else have any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next, consider a resolution ratifying the investment for following city funds. It looks like we've got four of them, two CDs and two SEDARs, two at Huntington Bank and two at Isabella Bank. Your pleasure.
Move to adopt.
Support.
Motion support. Any comments or questions?
Just continuing to try to diversify our investments. And as you can see from the interest rates, we're still looking good. Six months highs 5.1, and we have a 12-month for 4.8. So some good rates.
Surprisingly.
Yes.
All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, please say no. And I would like to abstain, please. And the motion has carried. Number three, to consider a resolution to approve the fiscal year 2024 budget amendments as presented. Your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Support.
Got a motion support? Color, you want to give it to Curtis?
We'll go through that, some of these here. The budget amendments before you are purchase orders that are being carried over from our FY 2023 to the current fiscal year, which started on July 1. A letter A, that is for $10,320 for carryover in the elections. And that's our tabulator related equipment, software, maintenance. The increase, our buildings and grounds expenditure to the back $20,000 for purchase orders. Again, these are all committed purchase orders in the FY 23, and we're moving them into 24. So these aren't new dollars. We're just moving them forward into our new budget. That's for the seal coating project here at City Hall and the church across the street, and to finish up our safety upgrades here at City Hall. Letter C, parking lot expenditures, that's our downtown parking lot projects. Obviously, that's still under, beginning finished up. So there's some final bills that would be coming in for that. The recreation and culture, this bill has been paid, but that was for the finish up the design work payments to Row Incorporated for the bathroom project there. Major street expenditures, $33,477. That is for design engineering, Michigan Avenue in front of the Avalon Tahoe plant and for the traffic control signs around the city. Increase in local street expenditure, $576,000. That is for the replacement of a fence. There's some tree work, reconstruction of the Iowa Street project. The part of this is the Pine and Washington sewer design. Francisco reconstruction we just talked about is in this change order. So all those types of projects are in that. Increase the street improvement military expenditure budget by $596,000. Moving, again, those are being moved from the 23 to the 24, and those are for neighborhood street projects, the engineering design, like Carver Street, Iowa, the survey work, and permitting and review of those projects for the water sewer permits. Increase the transit budget, that's moving $5,046, and that is to complete their flooring project of carpet. The wastewater expenditure budget, $2,565,379. 2.1 of that is our project that we just, well, will be underway this week. Was supposed to be underway last week along Washington Street over to Pine Avenue through the neighborhoods there. But also includes chemicals that we procure over the year, the sludge removal, their equipment maintenance that's planned throughout the year, the industrial equipment plan that we're working on currently. There's some valve and bypass work that needs to be done. All lots, just a whole laundry list of different wastewater projects that need to happen, including the Station 9 and 10 that we just approved for Arcadia Township. So those all being moved over to this budget year. Water expenditure budget, $141,000. Same sorts of things. We, our projects for Iowa, Harvard, Hammond Pleasant, finished in Ozawa Republic and Francisco. And part of that, it's with, it's the 221404. This one kind of caught me by surprise because it was $3,000. But it's water filters for our distribution system maintenance inventory. So as we need filters for folks who we find that have galvanized pipes, that we do offer them free of charge, a filter and a system to set the filter into their faucet. I think we give them two, correct, David? For free. And that is just an open, I guess you'd say, ticket to get those from the hardware to give the folks. So that's the water distribution. And then the last one we have here is for the refuge expenditure budget, and that's for $18,360. And that is for the yard waste, the yard waste site where we go through and sift out the compost and then put the compost out at the street. We rent this piece of equipment to do that and a more timely manta, as opposed to using the one. We do have one on site, but it's very small. We take a long time to do it. It's just much more economical for us to rent it because we can do it every couple of years. And that piece of equipment, I believe, is like $350,000 if you were to purchase one of those pieces of equipment. So it's a good deal for us to do that way. But that's a quick and overdeal of there, yes.
Anybody have questions on any of those items?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting, please say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, please say no. Hearing none. All those in, the motion is carried. We've adopted, sorry. Next up, consideration of a resolution to approve a request from the Highland Festival Committee to create the Highland Festival Fund and act as a fiduciary for the annual festival. Your pleasure. Move to approve.
Support.
Motion support. Some color for us?
If we helped out the festival a little bit last year with some sponsorships to take them in so they could provide some donation, tax deductible donations to those folks who wrote in sponsorships. This year, to make it a little more formalized and to help them out a little bit extra, we'd like to get a resolution of support from the commission so we can put that with our paperwork that we could show to the auditors as, hey, we've created this fund for the festival and working hand in hand with them to help bring in sponsorships and pay some bills. So there is a resolution as part of your packet to approve tonight if you so choose to.
Okay, who has questions?
I just, I should wrap this up. And the resolution that's in our packet, it still has Sheila's name.
Oh, we got that changed, I, yeah.
I figured you did, but I didn't even notice. Anyway, sorry, meant to bring it up and change.
So I assume the motion was, for the updated resolution?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? And I will abstain because I'm on the committee. So with that, the motion has carried. Number five, we're to consider a resolution to approve a request from Consuming Cannabis located at 528 West Warwick Drive to hold a customer appreciation event with amplified noise on Saturday, October 7, 2023, pursuant to ordinance number 605, which allows the city commission to approve a variance to the noise ordinance. Your pleasure with this.
Move to approve.
Support.
Got a motion to support?
As I said, it's customer appreciation. They'll have a variety of different artists or bands or that sort of thing there that day.
So it's not just noise?
It's not just noise. It's music. But when we enforce things, we don't distinguish if it's amplified music or noise, it can be heard from other places. So they're doing, questioning it the right way, and it'll be done by 8:00. So it doesn't look like this will be running late. And where they're located, they're not earshot really of anything.
A lot of homes near back in the address. Okay. With that, anybody have more questions? All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion is carried. Moving now to reports. The commissioners may receive the following reports by one resolution, or a commissioner may remove any item within the section for individual discussion and vote. Tonight, we have the planning commission, September 11, 2023, draft minutes, and the city manager's newsletter. Your pleasure on receipt.
Move to pull the city manager's newsletter and accept her number one.
Support.
Motion is support. Any questions? None. All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried. And we'll entertain a motion for the manager's newsletter.
Move to receive the city manager's newsletter. Okay, here we go. Going to be brief tonight. The first item is probably the one we, part of the assignment for tonight. The commission has voiced some interest in changing up the format of how we present some information and get feedback from commission. And looking at two different options for that. And the thought was, previous 18, we used to meet as a work session in the committee room beforehand. And we'd go through the city manager's newsletter, and then we'd have discussion about some items that had required commission feedback with no actions taken in that room. We come out here and we necessarily wouldn't necessarily have to discuss it. It would be taken care of there. As we were getting extra people coming to our meetings, we didn't, well, one, we didn't have enough room for everybody in there. So we moved out here. Plus, the thought was also to make it more transparent because we had the camera out here too to do that. So we were filming that part of the meeting also. The former city manager then decided to move the, what we used to do in the work session portion, which is the newsletter, and underneath the reports, and go that way. And that's what we've been doing since then. What we could do, if the commission would like, is go back to the work session format and to put in a, you know, a really brief explanation of that type of session. And not necessarily do we have to hold a work session every meeting either, unless there's a reason to do that. Or that could just be the time period we'll be used to in the past is review the newsletter or bring up other options, issues or things that the commission wants to discuss at that point. It's informal. No action is taken during the work session. It's always done in the regular meeting. Along with that, it's something that we, both of these are, but both, we would need to let the public know that we're, you know, changing format. Let them know that here's why we're doing it, and we're hoping to get better discussion between all the members of the commission staff. And then, of course, both the opportunities of the public to speak also so they could make the comments too if they wanted to within whatever parameters that we put aside. So pretty informal, no actions taken during work sessions, and they're all done at the regular meeting. The other option is what's called the committee of the whole. It's a more formalized idea of the work session. It has its own agenda. Basically, you're holding its own separate meeting that you call the order and go through the agenda. Ultimately, it's a member, it's a committee of every commissioner as opposed to if there's a work group that the commission want to put together, you pick three commissioners and you have them sit down and go through a project and come up with recommendations. In this case, the whole commission would be walking through a particular topic, research it out, bring in folks who might know more about the topic, it has to be staff or outside folks to talk to you about those things. Ultimately, with the angle of making a recommendation that would be brought before the commission in a regular meeting. So there is action that's eventually taken from that committee of the whole. Be it, yep, we're going to recommend that the city move forward with this or then approve it at a regular commission meeting. Or as the legislature says, if it gets to the point where you've gone through the research and says, nope, this is not something we want to pursue any further, you would make a recommendation to come up to this board, a regular meeting, and vote to, you know, we're done with that topic. We're not going to go any further with that. So a little more formality to it. And there's action that comes out of the committee of the whole as opposed to general discussion that can be used as part of the regular meeting through the work session.
I kind of like the idea of going back to the 5:30 just work session meeting. I don't really understand why it has to be in there that involves moving the camera and all that stuff. And there's not, there's only room for about five guests in there. Why couldn't it be here?
It doesn't have to be here. As long as you notice the.
Right. This is not a meeting. We're not going to vote on anything. But I don't know why we couldn't do it right here. So we're not talking about anything that can't be discussed in public anyways.
No, in fact, it is. The nice thing about that room as opposed to this one is it's a round table. It does facilitate conversation a little more easily and a little more.
And that's still fine.
And in fact, when we did, when we used to do those, I don't think anybody's here. Were you here at the time?
Okay.
We used to do it.
I was, yeah.
Okay. Isn't that as long as I thought of it? Like I said, but I mean, even if we had a crowd, we could bring it out here. I think in the past, we had several times.
The only thing, because I was thinking through this, I can't think of any good reason. The only other good reason that I can think of for not having it out here would be the constant disruption of people coming in for the 6:00 meeting. If we were talking about stuff and, you know, there are a lot of people coming in for the 6:00 meeting, that can be disruptive. If we weren't there, it would not be so much. How much hassle is it to move?
We can get another tripod and just move the camera.
We've talked about that.
Honestly, I guess my preference would be not to broadcast the work session. I don't see any need for that. I think it would, if anything, maybe even hamper some question.
And if it's open, if the doors are open.
It is an open meeting.
If we don't have to video, I would.
It saves a lot of hassle.
Yeah, I would just.
But that's obviously.
The committee of the whole thing, just, I read through all that. It just seems kind of bothersome.
We might as well do it in a meeting. To have it formal. That would be my thought as well, so. We don't have to decide anything tonight, even though somebody wants to. But I appreciate the explanation of a couple of options there. So I don't know if anybody's ready to make a decision. As far as noticing, we're going to have to notice if we go to a 5:30 work session or the committee of the whole, what's the timeframe on getting that out?
It's the same as a regular meeting.
Pardon me?
It's the same as a regular meeting. It's subject to Open Meetings Act.
Right.
I would just post it with a regular meeting.
Do you just have to post it on the website? Or does it have to go out in the newspaper?
I would post it on the website.
Okay.
You call it a special meeting, then I would have to post it 18 hours before the meeting. Otherwise, I would just post it.
So I guess we're pretty clear. We can make a motion or a decision tonight if you'd like. Anybody have a preference?
In time too, I mean. No, if we could push it, we could just keep it at 6:00 and then we'd just have a work session. I mean, our meetings would basically last the same amount of time because we would take, basically, this portion of the meeting would be in our work session. And then the hard part about that is.
We'd probably be moving our regular meeting then to 6:30 rather than 7:00.
Correct. I know 6:00 is already, I'm like running through the clock. To get here.
Well, I hang out at work for two hours. So if I go home, I'll never get here. So I mean, for the 5:30, but if we can't do it.
I mean, I can make the 5:30 work too if everyone needs that, but.
And you said we wouldn't always need to do the work session, so.
Not necessarily, no.
So I agree. I think pushing to 6:00 and the regular meeting starting at 6:30. But if we don't need to go there, though, would we be able to start the meeting?
All meetings have to start at 6:30.
I agree with you that it's part of it.
Everything would have to start at, yeah.
Or I mean, and we don't have to do anything. We can just keep going and then do everything there as well. So whatever your pleasure is.
Let's keep going to the end of the year and then decide in January.
Okay.
That sounds good to me.
All right.
We're moving along just fine.
I'm easy.
And if there are important things on the schedule that we feel like we can always schedule one, like we have in the past.
That is true.
And, you know, the rest of the items that are on the newsletter here are just informational. So if, you know, I usually do go through them and review them just for the sake of the camera and the general public because I know everyone here has read it. So if, you know, if we'd like to not bother with those types of things, I can, you know, just scratch those and.
I think it's still important for you to, I mean, I don't know. I guess my opinion, as far as the camera, if you're giving an update, I think that's important. I guess unless it's not, I mean, I don't know.
No, they're all, they're all.
I would agree. It's not for us. We have.
Exactly.
It's for the public that are turning in.
And it's also on the website, like the other reports.
Yeah, it is. But I think that the idea of, you know, part of the reason we're recording and putting it up there is because people aren't necessarily going to the website to read things. I mean, and some people, that's not the most conducive way for them to, I don't know. I think it's a good idea. I think that we kind of, I mean, it doesn't seem like we're doing a long meeting. But I think if we're zipping through and we're not, you know, we're just saying, ah, you can look at it on the website. I would, I think that may hinder people's opinions of our openness of what we're, I mean, I know it's not critical necessarily things that have to be posted in a newspaper. But I think it's, I think it's helpful that you cover those topics at the meeting, even though we have read them beforehand.
Good. I agree. I think for a lot of the people who watch, that's probably the, a good chunk of the things that they're kind of interested in. Yeah.
All jumper into that. Just real briefly, these are some good things that are going on. The Fire District did receive a $50,000 grant from the Michigan Fire Equipment Grant Program. This was available to all volunteer on-call departments, $10,000 per department. But since we are a district that shares with Sumner Seville and parts of Pine River and Arcata, we were able to get $50,000 instead of $10,000, which shows, you know, working together does help in some circumstances. So we're very appreciative of our partners to support us in getting that. We talked about code enforcement to the advisory board at the last meeting and set that up. Staff is currently working with some other communities to get their drafts of how they're set up. So we'll have that here for you soon. Some very good news, the Wellhead Protection Plan, the board, advisory board, the board that was put together for the, for the Wellhead Protection, that plan has been approved by the state of Michigan Eagle. That's very good news for us. That's going to be helpful in the future as we apply for different grants through the state of Michigan and through the federal government for water resources.
Eric, before you get off of that, can you tell me what the Wellhead Protection Plan is? And going, this stuff said both wellhead protection and projection. I wasn't sure which it was. But it's protection and.
No, I, my fingers wanted to talk differently.
Is it projection?
It's protection.
It is protection, okay.
The, the, the short of it is, in the past, we all have wells that were drilled privately. The idea is every time you poke a hole in the ground, that's an opportunity for some kind of contamination to get into the aquifer. So the idea is to go around and find all these areas, including industrial. We have a lot of industrial uses that happened here over the years in Alma and surrounding areas. Finding those, making sure that they are capped or they're, that they're not leaching and there's those sorts of things. Basically, the bottom line is that the State of Michigan wants to verify that we are doing whatever we can across, everybody in the State of Michigan wants to get these approved, that we're doing what we can, make sure things are capped and that nothing is leaching off, off properties anywhere. That's the long and short of it.
Okay, thank you.
It's a, it's a 520 something.
Do you want me to help you explain the board?
Yeah, if you want to.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Dave.
I'm going to try to keep.
They, they spent a lot of time on this. This was funded by the State of Michigan Eagle, paid for all the, for those, for the plans, so.
Dave Ringel, Public Services Director, this is something that the Wellhead Protection Team, Roxanne probably knows about it through the GAWA Board. They've been dealing with this for about two and a half years now. What we've done is compiled information based on wells, brownfields, potential contamination sites, identifying where those are, a lot of them are within the City of Alma region. And part of this plan also tells us where our source water comes from, talks about the aquifers, how long it takes to replenish those, potential sources where they do get replenished, and potential areas to seek other water avenues in the future because at some point there's going to have to be more wells drilled than that in the immediate future. So, and if there is any kind of contamination or kind of event, people that are on the team, it's part of planning documents, the county health department was on that board as well. So you have a lot of different actors and players that are part of this that are, that know of the plan, know where their source water is for the water treatment facility. So to try to remediate any kind of issues, it's, and as well as potential conflicts for the, the wellfields that we have out there, so.
Okay.
A lot of geological information and surveys. If anybody's sat in on that board, there are a lot of boring meetings, but they were very interesting, showing you where your water comes from, how old it is, potential future sites and things. So that's about the shortest way I can explain it.
If I may compliment everybody that worked on that, it's a very proactive approach to protecting our water source. So, I mean, there's just no downside to it that I could see.
Correct. And it was 100% grant funded, which was very nice. You're exactly right.
Like you said, if there is some kind of any events, you'll know where the potential holes are, wells that are maybe leaking or whatever.
Good, thank you.
Very good things.
I did not know, and no, I did.
And I'm piggybacking on what Dave said there. Well 12 is up and running and, like Dave just mentioned, we're not going to need any wells in the near, in the near future. So that's good news. So we can kind of rest and work on some other things there. And, and the thing, I would like to thank the folks who have sat on that, Doug Merchant from Arcata Township, a lot of the wells that we do have are that way in Gratchit County here. Bill Leonard, Gratchit County Soil Erosion, but he also sits on the St. Louis Council. Brian Fowler from Mid Michigan District Health, Dave Ringel from City, Doug Serenkowski, he's our Water Plant Superintendent, Jim Wheeler from Greater Gratchit, and the Gratchit Area Water Authority, Keith Riston from the City of St. Louis, and then Kirk Owens from the City of St. Louis. So thanks to everybody that worked on that. Yeah, and we are putting that up online, so anybody can, if you feel like learning all about that, there's 500 pages there to sift through.
Like three.
And then lastly, Kathy Rosen, our City Assessor, sent over a, some information for a class that has not been provided since, I believe, 2018, she said. But the US Treasury, I'm sorry, not the US Treasury, the State Treasury is putting this on. And the base, it's Understanding the Basics of Assessing for Local Unit Officials. The training is for free. It's a one-day training down in Okemos. I have signed up for it. So if anyone would like to go, it is a very informative, one-day class to kind of get a basic understanding of, of the assessing process. So if anyone would like to sign up, the link is in your packet. It is free. Let me know if you'd like a ride down to Okemos and we'll head on down there. And I know a little bit about it, but from what Matt, I think you've attended, correct?
Yes, it's a very good class. It is very, like you said, Eric, it's very informative and Kathy does it. I don't know if Kathy's going this time too.
I don't think she's.
She went. When, when I went, she took us down and she helped to interpret some of what they were saying, but very informative. Kathy's great for answering questions as well, so I would recommend anybody if you can go to sit in on it. Really eye-opening what they go through, what her team goes through, so.
And it's free, so.
And free is a great.
That's right. And take a ride with me in the morning.
Probably have to buy a log.
So, so that's all I had for tonight.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting or receiving your report, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion is carried and we've received your report. Thank you. Appointments. We're going to consider a resolution to appoint the Planning Commission Member David Justin to the countywide Master Planning Steering Committee.
Move to adopt.
Support.
Motion support. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried and Mr. Justin has been appointed. Thank you for volunteering, David. Appropriations. Is there any interest in paying the bills tonight?
I need to pay the appropriations.
Support. Motion support. Anybody have any questions about that? Longest of bills. Hearing none. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried, we've paid the bills. Commissioner comments in reports, I guess. Okay. Roxanne, you're leading off tonight.
Sure. I just would like to express my sadness, losing Mel. He was a clever, funny, dedicated, both to the City of Alma and the college, and loved, adored his family, and his presence will be missed, so.
Absolutely. Thank you. Danny?
Nothing else to add. Thank you.
Roger?
I'd really like to add to that, but just to throw my two cents in too. Mel was mayor when I started on commission and served under him for several years and enjoyed the time that he was in that chair over there and was a wonderful man, a wonderful family. Arlene was a big supporter of a lot of the stuff that we do, like Gratchit County Players. And I visited him a couple of times over in the, what's the name of that place?
Harbor Grove.
Yeah, Harbor Grove, thank you. And it was, it was very difficult to see him continue to fail as he did. But it's tough for Arlene, it's tough for anybody in that situation, so our love and prayers are certainly with her.
What's it?
I can say the, I'll, in favor, I think the meeting closed, the rest of you get up and leave, or, I don't remember. That's how you always end.
Yeah.
Get up and leave.
Yeah, that's right. Yep. In favor, get up and leave. Right. Or.
Did Ellen what they said about Mel? He was one of the first people I met when I first moved here and welcomed me with open arms and I felt right at home thanks to him, meeting him, sort of condolences to the family. Other than that, no.
Sure.
Same, expressing my sympathy to Mel's family. He was one of the first people I met when I started working at the college and certainly the first person I met that was part of the City Commission and kind of would stop by my office, keep me updated on what's going on with the city and was always fun to be around. Very sad news.
Just, yeah, echo everyone's thoughts. My, I feel fortunate that I got to work with Mel and, and all the discussions that we needed to have, we did get to have. And he was a big supporter of Rails to Trails, so him and I had a lot of discussions about Rails to Trails and bicycling and, and, yeah, I'll, and so I'm glad I got to work with him and know him, hope he was here, so.[1743.13]